Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission. My name is Kirk Walder and I am the Chair Pro Tem. I will call the meeting to order and for the purpose of determining a quorum, I will ask each Planning Commissioner to signify their attendance by stating their name as you are recognized. Kristy? Kristy, you'll need to unmute or Colleen, if you can unmute Kristy.
Yes, Kristy Candle here.
Thank you. Bryce?
Bryce Clutz, present.
Thank you. Maureen?
Maureen Casey, present.
Thank you. Dave?
Dave Akola, present.
Thank you. Mark? Mark?
Yes, Mark Danton Rip, present.
Thank you. Brian?
Brian Owen, present.
Thank you. We have all seven members participating. We have a quorum. If members will now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the Planning Commission and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voicemail on Douglas County's public comment line, seven seven five, seven eight three, six zero eight eight. Once a public comment period has been opened, once a public comment period has been opened, once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and Planning Commission in the order they recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during each public comment period. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at eight AM on Tuesday, April fourteenth. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. The time is now one oh three, so we'll leave public comment open till one oh five. And at this point, the staff can play any public comments we have received so far.
Thank you. Give me one minute.
Hello, my name is Iris Blaisdell, I R I S B L A I S D E L L. And my husband is Jim, J I M. We're both residents in Gardinerville. And we would like to state that we would favor putting the levy of a sales tax for open space on the ballot for Douglas County. And let the voters decide. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Hold on, I have one more.
Colleen, are you able to play the next message?
I'm sorry, it's not playing on your end?
No, it did not play on our end. We heard the first one from Iris and Jim.
Okay, let me try again. Hold on.
Thank you.
Jim Slade, S L A T E. On item number one, master plan amendments must meet all four required findings. This request fails in that regard and therefore must be denied. As usual, staff has carefully picked a few policies and goals that this request might argue will meet. The land use policies quoted, however, are so vague as to be irrelevant. Leaving the land as forest and range would also meet those policies. The required findings also state that it must promote the overall goals and objectives of the master plan. Most important of these, as written in the introduction to our ninety-six plan, is to retain our rural character. Staff also fails to mention any change in circumstances as required. As far as demonstrated need, there is no basis for that claim. Even before approval of the twenty-five hundred homes on park ranch land, there were nearly four thousand homes that could be built and approved developments. Even subsequent to the ill-advised park approval, the board substantially increased the number of homes in the North Douglas Pacific Plan to twelve thirty-eight and approved two hundred and thirty-nine new homes in Rancho Sierra. So now there are more than seven thousand new dwelling units that could be built. You can't just keep claiming that there is a demonstrated need without taking that into consideration. It's also required that the proposal be compatible with the actual and master plan use of adjacent properties. Just look at the map on page one oh four. The actual land use of the adjacent property of the west and south is vacant land and to the east is public land owned by the Correctional Center. The adjacent land to the south is forest and range. It is not the Sunridge Development, which is neither adjacent nor is more than a small fraction of it directly south of the subject parcel. For staff to pretend that it is is either ignorant or purposely deceitful. Surely staff understands the meaning of the word adjacent, which means having a common border, not somewhat nearby. And if you look at the lower map on page one oh seven, you will see that the master planned uses of the adjacent property are public land to the east, forest and range to the south, and community facilities to the west. So again, this proposal would only be consistent at all with the use of the property of the north, which is in Carson City. Hence, this finding too cannot be met and this proposal must be denied. On agenda item number three, I encourage you to forward the resolution on open space to the board with a recommendation before the voters this November. I see this as a win-win with the residents being able to retain the rural character that they desire and the agricultural community being able to be well-paid for development rights on their property while still being able to own the land and to continue to make use of it for ag purposes. These purchases of development rights would only be between a willing buyer and willing seller. It could save substantial land from development while helping our ag community and costing taxpayers very little. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's some more coming in. Give me a minute.
Okay, take your time, Colleen. We'll just play them in the order that they came in.
My name is Doug Hill. I'm calling about the Conway proposal for the subdivision. I am the, my name is Doug Hill, D O U G H I L L. I'm the property to the south of the Conways and at this point, based on the limited knowledge we have of the project, we are not opposed to it. However, we are concerned about the drainage through that property. I have explained in more detail to Dennis Conway what our concerns are. Thank you.
Everyone heard that one?
Yes, that was good. Thank you.
One more.
L E E L L I E Waller, W A L L E R. I completely agree with every comment that Jim Slade provided during public comment at the beginning of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now, right now, that's the last one.
Okay, I have one eleven by my clock and we started the public comment at one oh three. So unless you get anything, Colleen, as I'm talking, I think we can close a public comment at one eleven PM. And I would remind people that the county's public comment phone line will remain open during the remainder of the meeting to allow for closing public comment to be recorded as the meeting progresses. And again, that comment number is seven seven five, seven eight three, six zero eight eight. So unless you have anything else, Colleen, I'll close public comment and we'll move to the next item on the agenda.
Correct.
Kirk, if I can, this is Sam Booth, Planning Manager. I have an email that we received last night. This was after our cutoff on the agenda of items that we were uploading to the website today. So this, I believe we received this email at about nine PM last night. But I can just share this with you via sharing my screen.
Please do.
Okay. You're with me here. And Colleen, can you enable the screen sharing?
It should be good.
If it's not lengthy, you're welcome to read it, Sam, whatever is your preference.
Okay, let me see here. It's not lengthy. I'm just getting it pulled up, but. This, this email is from Ed Kleiner at nine seventeen West Highway eighty-eight. And this was addressed, the subject is "Letter to the Commissioners for Open Space Preservation in Douglas County" and goes based in Douglas County. "I encourage the Board of County Commission of Douglas County for preservation of open space in item three and the agenda balance needs to be struck and appropriate use of county such. There is strong sentiment from residents of eventual consent. Please vote to move finer."
Before Brian, so Bryce seconds the approval of the, no favor, Bryce. Maureen, did you have a correction or a comment?
I turned mine in to staff. So I have none at this time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with corrections to the minutes? Seeing no other corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the two meetings?
So Maureen, I motion, we accept the minutes as corrected.
Maureen moves to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
I second. Dave Akola?
Dave Akola seconds the motion to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call the roll. Kristy?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
The Chair Pro Tem votes aye on this vote. There are seven ayes, no nays. The motion to approve that meeting minutes of the two meetings are approved. Our next agenda item is election of the Chair and Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for the position of Chair?
I nominate Kirk Walder.
Brian nominates Kirk Walder for the position of Chair. Is there a second?
I second that.
Mark, I think I heard you first, so Mark seconds the nomination. It's been moved in second that Kirk Walder be Chair. Is there discussion? Seeing no, no discussion, I'll call the roll. Kristy?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
The Chair Pro Tem votes aye on this vote. There are seven ayes, no nays. So I'll continue the meeting now as Chair. Now, is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Maureen Casey for Vice Chair.
Mark nominates Maureen Casey for Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Dave Akola seconds. Is there discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the roll on the nomination of Maureen Casey to be Vice Chair. Kristy?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
The Chair also votes aye. So on this vote, there are seven ayes and no nays. So Maureen Casey is elected Vice Chair. I thank you all. And we'll now move on to the first agenda item, which I will read into the record. And I would like to note before I read into the record on the Planning Commission packet, there's a duplicate page on one thirty-seven and one thirty-six, one thirty-eight, so people don't get confused on that. So the first agenda item is for possible action. Discussion on a master plan, future land use map amendment from forest and range to single-family estates and a zoning map amendment from FR nineteen, forest and range nineteen acre minimum size parcel to SFR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum parcel size for two parcels within the Indian Hills-Jacks Valley Community Plan. The subject parcels total thirty-nine point four acres in size and are located on both sides of Center Drive and immediately south and west of the Carson City-Douglas County line. The property owners are Dennis and Marcia Conway, represented by Keith Rubin of Ro Anderson. APN one four two zero dash zero eight dash five zero one dash zero zero one and one four two oh dash zero eight dash five zero one dash zero zero two. Development applications DP nineteen dash zero five zero seven and DP nineteen dash zero five zero nine. Sam, I'll recognize you to make the presentation on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. Let me know if you can see my first slide here. This was just the recap of this item number one, the Conway Master Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment.
It looks good, Sam. Go ahead.
Okay. So first, just start with describing the site and have a vicinity map here. The project site includes thirty-nine point four acres. It is bordered on the Carson City-Douglas County line. On this map, that's shown as the blue line here. This is the northeastern corner of Douglas County. This is Carson City to the north of the site. The site is called out, site boundary and two proposed parcels are called out in red here on the map. This is within the Indian Hills-Jacks Valley Community Plan area. I would note that you can see Highway three ninety-five to the west, Sunridge Drive, Topsie Lane to the north. On this vicinity map here, the property is highlighted in yellow. The county boundary again is in blue here. What I'm calling out with this map is in red, you can see planned developments that are to the west and to the south of the proposed site for this project. Most notably, the area to the west is within the North Douglas County specific plan area. And this includes the Valley Knolls Plan Development, the Big George and Riverwood Plan Development. To the south, and yes, it is a, one parcel over to the south is the Sunridge Plan Development. And you can see the boundaries of those planned developments in red. You can see the homes in Sunridge that are built, the golf course area, those type of things. But you may remember earlier this year, we had the North Douglas County Specific Plan Amendments. Those were in this area here, the Big George Plan Development. The Valley Knolls Plan Development was approved in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. And this outline here is, is for the single-family portion of that development. Right at the corner of Sunridge Drive is multifamily residential. I believe there's about ninety-six units that were approved at that location there. Community development has site improvement permits pending for the single-family and the multifamily portion of that development as well as a final map that's pending for recordation of those lots. So we do expect to see development on, on both of those sites within the next year. The Big George Plan Development and Riverwood Plan Development were approved and are moving forward, but we don't have final maps or lots actually created on those as of yet. Would move on to show you the current master plan map for the site. So the Conway property, again, highlighted in red here. The current future land use designation is forest and range. And you can see the colors indicating the different land uses there. We have brought into this map and incorporated Carson City's future land use map from their master plan as well, as they're adjacent to this property to the north. Thought it's important to show the density and the proposed uses of those sites. So you can see low-density residential is Carson City's master plan used to the north. To the west is community facilities as part of that specific plan area. So really, everything that you see outlined here in the purplish color is within the North Douglas County Specific Plan. And the border of that entire site is all community facilities. It could be fire station, library, police station, any type of community facilities, uses a park, of course, and open space. And I believe that is what is planned for, for most of that area with the approvals that are in place up to today. The yellow is single-family residential. The pinkish color is multifamily. In this area here, there's some commercial up here. There is some receiving area in there. In the Sunridge Plan Development, this is single-family residential, the yellow. The green is recreation. And yes, there's forest and range, future land use on the eastern portion of the Sunridge Plan Development. This is actually where the golf course is located. And then there's, there's open space, some kind of rolling topography there. And that was a part of the required open space for the Sunridge Plan Development. So the zoning was not changed, even though it was changed for the single-family uses where the lots were developed. The property to the, to the south, excuse me, of the site in question is forest and range as well. So the applicant is proposing to change the master plan designation of the site to single-family estate. And you can see this shown here on the map. Again, with the, the designation to the north of low-density residential in Carson City is most related to our single-family estate future land use, which is larger lot, estate-style lots, not quite your size of our RA, our rural agriculture, not five or ten acre, but the one to five acre range lot sizes. And that is compatible essentially with to the north in Carson City, their low-density residential designation. The current zoning map for the site, you can see this here. The zoning is FR nineteen, forest and range nineteen acre minimum parcel size. And again, the site highlighted in red. To the north in Carson City is single-family one acre, is that a beige-ish color. There's manufactured housing, one acre. So this is a manufactured housing overlay. And there are one acre lots. So it would be compatible with the proposed use of single-family one acre. To the west is public facilities. That's compatible with the master plan use of community facilities. Again, the PD here is denoting that these are all within plan development designations. This is again, within the specific plan there. In the Sunridge area, these are twelve thousand square foot lots within the plan development. So preserving that open space to the east and developing the lots there is twelve thousand square foot. Would just point out the planned development parameters in Valley Knolls and in the Riverwood and Big George, the lot sizes vary. They were approved with the planned developments from about five thousand square foot lots all the way up to eight thousand square foot lots. And then in Sunridge, as I, as I pointed out, twelve thousand. This area to the north in Carson City, it's darker area, is the Shoals Ranch Plan Development. It's a specific plan, actually, I believe. And this, these are six thousand square foot lots. So in, I've analyzed in the staff report and put a description in there for you. But you know, in staff's opinion, as you look at the site and as you look at three ninety-five to the west here, you have dense development, you have MFR zone properties. Like I said, ninety-six units on that site. You have between five thousand and eight thousand square foot lots. As you're moving east, you're, you're becoming less dense. And the same is true from the north, from Topsie. The Shoals Ranch, six thousand square foot lots. And you're moving south and you have some half acre lots in here and then you have one acre lots. And this, this proposed development, let me go to that map, excuse me. The applicant is proposing single-family one acre zoning on the site, which in our opinion would be compatible with the zoning of the properties to the north and is less dense than what is already approved to the west and to the south in the Sunridge Plan Development. And yes, I did hear during public comment, we are not removing out of the conversation, there is a property to the south of the Conways. They are still zoned FR nineteen. They didn't, were not part of this application. They would be the last parcel if this application is approved in that area that's zoned FR nineteen. To the east in Carson City, across the county line, there's agricultural zoning and there's public facility zoning. Part of this is the prison property over here. So we know that at least in, in the near future, but I would venture to say in the long-term future, there will not be development to the east. So again, this is less dense than much of the development in the Indian Hills-Jacks Valley area. And definitely with the adjacent developments to the west and, and the south and to the north of what's developing in Carson City. On this map here, this is a utilities map, just highlighting the project site and showing the Douglas County water lines in blue and the Douglas County sewer lines in green highlighted. They are either adjacent to or located on the site. And the applicant has intent to serve letters for water and sewer from Douglas County and will serve letters from Charter Communications, Frontier, NV Energy, and Southwest Gas. In the staff report, we have a description about the requirements for traffic. So the county code requires that traffic study is not required if trip generations are below five hundred average daily trips or eighty peak hour trips. The applicant submitted an analysis for the potential of twenty-eight single-family lots. That there'd be an average daily trip of three hundred and twenty-two and a peak hour trip in the evening of thirty-two. So in their opinion, it did not meet our threshold for the traffic study to be required. But our engineering department has noted that they would require the applicant to submit a full traffic report with any future land division submission with. So if we see a subdivision application come forward subsequent to this application, engineering staff is prepared to require a full traffic report. And that's essentially, you can see in the description here. Because of the developments in that North Douglas County Specific Plan area and the developments in the Schneider Ranch, there's a lot of improvements that have been done to Topsie Lane and Center Drive accessing out to three ninety-five. It's very important to analyze what the impacts of any additional lots would be. Those, those other developments have had to make contributions to those intersections. And I believe that's, that's why engineering is concerned about seeing a detailed traffic study for this. The applicants have submitted a conceptual site plan. Would only just note that, again, this is very conceptual. They're not obligated to submit this as part of the application. This is just an application for a zoning map amendment and a master plan amendment. There is no subdivision being proposed at this time, but this is just to indicate, you know, how this, this property could be developed to the one acre density. And so you can see the extension of Center Drive to the south into the site. And the road is following essentially the, the two parcel lines. You would have some lots on the west side of Center Drive and some lots on the east side of Center Drive. I believe also in the applicant, Keith Rubin or the Conways can speak up, but I believe their existing house on the property is right here on this lot. But I believe their existing house on the property is right here on this lot. And again, this is just demonstrating how this could be subdivided into 28 single-family lots. So the findings for approval of this application, we have findings for a master plan amendment, which are in Douglas County Code 20.608040. And findings A through D, four findings must be made in the affirmative. And for a zoning map amendment, A through D, this is 20.610050. Staff believes that these findings can be made. These are found in your packet on pages 111 through 113. We have a description and a response for each of the findings. Also, the applicant has responded to the findings in their justification letter as well. And staff recommends the planning commission make a recommendation of approval to the board of county commissioners. So I have two recommended motions here, a motion for the master plan amendment. And then we also have a separate motion for the zoning map amendment and the ordinance. So the master plan amendment would be approval by resolution. The zoning map amendment would be approval by ordinance 20201568. That concludes what I have in my presentation, Mr. Chairman. And I can come back to these slides. I do know the applicant is on the line. And I believe Mr. Keith Rubin may have some he wants to add.
Thank you. Are you guys ready for me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rubin.
Okay, thank you, Keith Rubin, Barrow Anderson Engineering, representing the applicant, Dennis Morrissey Conway. I really just have a very short, I guess, presentation. Thank you, Sam, for that presentation. I think it highlighted all the important aspects for our application. I do have, I wanted to like to just do a quick screen share, if that's possible.
Go ahead and try, Keith.
Okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So I think what we're here to examine really is if the force and range land use designation is appropriate for the site. And we, of course, think that it's not. Property is not and has not been used for cattle grazing, open space or federal lands. If you look on page four of the staff report, you'll see that Mr. Booth included a description in the master plan and in the zoning code what the FR force range designation means and also the zoning classification. It's been intended strictly for outlying lands, but limited or no access to utilities. And primarily in the Pine nuts, Topaz area and some of the, perhaps in the Sierra range where this forest conservation needs in that area. So it's been used strategically, I'd say, by the county historically. And in this area, it was a predominant land use prior to the adoption of the North Douglas County Specific Plan, which occurred about in the 2000, 2000, 2001 timeframe. The area development's becoming more urban, of course, as I think as Sam pointed out, with the Shoals Ranch development in Carson City and the North Douglas County Specific Plan. I also want to point out the site as of about 2003 is also within the CAPO boundary. If you're not aware, CAPO, that's the Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary. It's basically for, they use it for transportation planning for the growing metropolitan or urbanizing uses in that part of the community. And it's Carson City primarily, but it also includes portions of Douglas County for those long-range transportation planning needs and funding, trying to find funding sources for all those transportation efforts. So it's just the one more thing when you're looking at, is this really the right designation for the site? And again, we don't think it is. This kind of reiterates my point about what the intent of these designations are. And then you see there FR19, preserve open space, preserve open areas for grazing and other agricultural uses for land under private ownership. Most of this, at the time, at 96 master plan, was actually under BLM ownership, federal ownership. This is the land use pre-Douglas County Specific Plan that came forward in the 96 master plan. And you can see this, all this yellow area, which is basically the North Douglas County Plan area, that was all forced and ranged. Of course, our client's property, the Conways, are in the far right corner. You can see his property, just adjacent to that boundary, and also his neighbor. He might, Doug, kind of was his first name, that's also his property. So predominantly for the plan, forced and ranged. You can see in the existing plan use, that's all changed. But this also shows what it looks like now with the North Douglas County Specific Plan, of course, it's planned for much more urban uses and those permits for those site improvements, the roads, utilities are already into community development too, so they can start construction. Douglas County vested and was provided easements from the Conways for water lines on the north and east boundaries of the site in order to service element in the North Douglas County Specific Plan area and in Carson City. I think that's an important point. So they granted some significant easements, there will be certain development. Well, obviously, also other kind of new settings, maybe we should reconsider our land use as well. Sewer main lies on the west boundary of the property. Power and gas are accessed via Center Drive, current certain site. And I wanted to know this, this is a screenshot from Mr. Booth's presentation. It doesn't show it, I think what happened is the project site overlay covered it up. But there's actually water main right there. So that water main, 16-inch water main borders that property and also goes to the south, connected to the main that comes up from the county. And of course, that's the line that serves on Carson City as well. There's actually two water mains that fall on the Alpkins property that they provided an easement to. And of course, the one on the north. And then on the west side of the property, that does not fall on his property, but is on an adjacent easement to the west boundary. Again, if you have any questions for me, I'm ready to respond to them. And also Dennis is on the phone available as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Keith. I think we had Dennis Conway on the phone line, if he wanted to add anything at this point. Dennis, did you want to go and make a statement?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Keith. That was well put out.
Okay, thank you very much, Dennis. If Keith, you have anything else to add, or Sam, you don't have anything else to add, we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Okay, I'll open it up for questions or comments that you might have of Sam Booth or Mr. Rubin. Are there any planning commission members that have questions or comments at this point? Mark, would you go ahead, please, again, state your name for the record and then go ahead with your question or comments?
Mark Mandrick for the record, and my question is for Sam. When we are looking to determine whether or not there are other existing parcels to determine the need, are we only looking in a specific area like the Indian Hills community? Or are we looking county-wide? Because I think that there's probably a fair number of single-family estates county-wide.
Yes, I think this is Sam Booth, planning manager, for the record. Thank you, Mark. I think that requirement for the master plan change, you could extrapolate that to say it's county-wide, you know, demonstrated need county-wide. I think the applicants in their justification primarily focus their search on the Indian Hills community, Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan area, because it has a different character to it within that community area in the North County there in near Carson City. Certainly, there are some other single-family estates properties in the county. And I don't have the data available county-wide to speak to how many of those sites are vacant and have not been developed versus how many are developed. But, you know, I think that is a question here for this proposal is, of course, the demonstrated need. Again, I think when you look at the Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan area, it's a different character to that development. There has been quite a bit of growth in the North County region. Much of our discussions at the planning commission board level, as we've moved through the master plan discussions are, you know, what are the areas that are more appropriate or less appropriate for development in the county? And I think quite often we point to the North County in Indian Hills, Jacks Valley area as being more appropriate for development. And Keith, in his, in his submittal here, and he can speak to that more, but he does do a pretty thorough breakdown of the census numbers and the assessed values in a land assessment of vacant property versus developed property in the Indian Hills, Jacks Valley area.
Kirk Walden, Mark, did you have further comments or questions?
Oh, I didn't know if Keith wanted to tell us his views on this or if that's inappropriate at this time.
No, go ahead, Keith.
I'm happy to chime in. Well, what the finding says is that the proposed amendment is based on a demonstrated need for additional land to be used for the proposed purpose. And the demand cannot be reasonably accommodated within the current boundaries of the area. Doesn't say the county. So it's talking about the boundaries of the area. The county is split up into community plan areas, community plan boundaries. So that's why we looked at it based on that, Mark, not county-wide, because that's not what the finding alludes to, under finding the, if that's what you're reading.
Okay, thank you.
And Mark, I was trying to look at this as I was responding with you, but I can read to you my response from the staff report to that finding, which is that data that was submitted by the applicant shows that 95% of parcels designated single-family estates have already been developed. Again, this is in the Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan area. And only 5% or 28 lots remain undeveloped in that area. And that they pointed out that a few parcels exist in the area that are suitable for residential development. I would point out suitable for residential development of one acre, one unit per acre density. We, again, we have much development to the west, to the north in Carson City, even to the south in Sunridge, that's more dense than this. There are not many one-acre lots within the Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan area. You'll remember, Mark, last year's application for the Willow Hills subdivision. That property had already been zoned, single-family one acre. So they did have that in place. But a lot of our conversation revolving around that was that it was the last corner, that was over in Jacks Valley there. But the last area of that development that had the zoning in place that could be developed. And so there's not much vacant land, if any, that's zones, single-family one acre or future land use, single-family estates in the North County there that's vacant and yet to be developed. Another item, you know, benefit that we saw to this application was that with the utilities being onsite and or just adjacent to the site there, that from a land use planning perspective, you know, I think a one-acre lot is less dense, much less dense than an urban half-acre, quarter-acre, definitely down to 6,000 square foot, 8,000 square foot lots that we're seeing commonly in the North County, but also throughout the county. So in general, a one-acre lot, I would say, is less dense and can be preserving the rural character of the county. A benefit of this is that we're not seeing, as we had a long discussion last year with the Willow Hills development, about well-inseptic systems and the impact of those on one-acre lots or even on two-acre or five-acre lots. But these are one-acre lots that are going to be tied into water and sewer system. And so to get the benefit of having each of these lots connected to public utilities and not have to worry about, you know, a new taps into the aquifer or an impact on nitrification in the ground. You know, I think that is a benefit here, but we're also getting a less-dense style development of one-acre lots.
Great. This is Kirk Walden. Thank you again, Sam. Mark, did you have other further questions or comments at this point?
Not at this time.
Great. Other planning commissioners have questions of Sam or of the applicant? Dave, I don't want to miss you because I can't see on the screen. Are you good for this time period?
For now, I am. I can't support this because I have had no other than the county saying that they'll provide a will serve letter. I don't think there's enough water in the basin to support this, so I cannot support it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to exclude you from commenting or asking questions. Bryce, Brian, Maureen, Christie, any questions or comments at this point? Okay, feel free to jump in. I'm going to just recap where we're at. Again, this is both a master plan, future land use amendment, and a zoning map amendment. So there'll be two issues that we'll need to vote on. And those are on page 100 of your packet. And I think at the appropriate time, Sam can put up on the screen the recommended motion. And I would also note for everybody's benefit that the findings for the master plan amendment are on page 111 and continue on page 112 of the packet. Those are A, B, C, and D. Those are the findings that you need to either agree with or if you feel that you cannot vote for the master plan amendment, that you find that one of those findings are something that you cannot support. And then on the zoning map amendment, that starts on page 112 of the packet. So again, we have A, B, C, and D on the zoning map amendment. And then I also would like to read again from the Douglas County Planning Commission bylaws, number 6.3, when it talks about the votes that we would take on issues of this. And it says, and I'll quote in part, "Individual members are encouraged to discuss their views of the evidence and why they are going to vote for or against the motion. If findings of fact are required for approval of an item, members are encouraged to individually discuss proposed findings, but at a minimum, discuss those findings that he/she cannot agree with." So that's kind of the basics on the ground rules on the motion. So I'll bring it back to my colleagues and ask if other people have questions or comments that they wish to raise at this point. Bryce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Bryce Klutz, for the record. I just want to follow up on a stated conversation that I had with Mr. Booth where I asked him, one of the challenges as a new plant commissioner that I'm dealing with is how much zoning is currently in the county set aside for single-family residential? Because as we look at each one of these zoning amendments, the struggle I have is how much has already been approved, what's available out there? You look at the the residential allocation table and the number of permits that are currently permitted. And I'm glad we're getting into the master plan amendment deeper because I think that will really help guide the county and really help me. Because right now, I'm struggling with what is considered, where should we change, have a zoning amendment, and where should we not? And what's available and what's not available? And unfortunately, all that information is not readily available. So I don't know how much single-family residential is available and whether or not I will, I'll go on record saying, I think if there's any place that supports it, it's this particular amendment. I just don't want to get in the habit of having these come before the commission over and over and not understanding the whole picture. So I just wanted to go on record stating that hopefully that information can be provided to the commission sooner than later. Because it would be helpful to me to be able to review that prior to another one of these coming before us. Thank you.
Yes, this is Kirk Walden. Bryce, thank you. That's a very good observation, very good points. I think Maureen has made that point in the past. I've tried to make that point in the past. Other members have made that, and I think that is an important database that we need to have brought forward. And I know Sam has been working on about 10 different projects at the same time. So we'll task him with that in the in the in the immediate future. Sam, did you have a response that you wanted to provide?
Yeah, I I don't, other than to clarify in my comments earlier, that I don't think that the that 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 finding that was quoted, finding B of the master plan amendments, doesn't preclude you from being able to look at, you know, the countywide and land uses and property that's available. And and that was the question that that Bryce had posed to me before was, you know, what land throughout the county do we have available? What have we already zoned for development or already have approvals in place for and those type of things? But my discussion of of the North County and where we where we got to with this and and what Keith's discussion that he had in his justification is, once again, the North County is is a unique area, has a different feel to it. There's much commercial development in the North County, Indian Hills, Jacks Valley area, but specifically adjacent to this site. And and so, again, to the extent of how much, what is available, what is pre-zoned for this? That there's only five percent of the land in that area in that community plan, or twenty-eight lots that remain undeveloped, that have this zoning designation in place, or or future land use, excuse me. It is something that that countywide, we can do that research, and Tom and I have discussed that as part of the master plan land use element. It's been done before in the 2011 plan, and I believe some analysis in the draft 2016 plan that we can talk to the assessor's office to see. Tom has some of this information already that we've used just on a case-by-case basis for applications. But how much land is already zoned for the for different single-family development or commercial development, industrial development? Acreage-wise and a breakdown by parcels, and then we can go, we can get that from our GIS department. And then we can go to the assessor's office and we can get the use table breakdown of, is that vacant land or is that developed land? Those type of things. We we definitely hope to include that with the master plan update. And we'll work to put together more of that issue with future proposals. But as it relates to this application in the North County here, there's not much land, you know, as I stated earlier, that is single-family estates of the one-acre lot, you know, density in that region. It's either much more dense, or it's for commercial development, or it is just open forest and rangelands, BLM land in Indian BIA property.
Great, thank you very much, Sam. Brian, I'll recognize you for questions or comments at this point.
Brian Owen, for the record, and I just wanted to clear this up. Sam, you're saying twenty-eight lots, we're only comparing single-family estates of one-acre size. You know, we do have quite a few lots right next to it, though they aren't single-family, you know, one-acre estates. So how many do we have approved directly to the west, I believe that is, in the Valley Knowles, you know? Between that and the Big George properties, how many are we looking at directly in that area?
So that's exactly right. We're the applicant and their application, and and I've put that into my staff report as well, are only speaking to the need for the additional need for single-family estates-type density of lots. Certainly, to the west, as I said, in the Valley Knowles, at the corner of Sunridge Drive where it makes the turn there, there's ninety-six multifamily units in the single-family portion of Valley Knowles. I believe it's around one hundred and seventy-five single-family units approved. And then we had, you know, within the entire North Douglas County specific plan, there there are quite a few units. The last Riverwood-Big George Plan Development, I believe there were about three hundred units proposed in there. So the ability for new units to develop, yes, certainly, there's land already zoned for that and and not yet, you know, lots not yet constructed.
So this is, so this is just picking up the missing piece, I guess, is what we're saying.
Yes, yes, I think this is, you know, these these two parcels, the applicant's property and and their neighboring property to the south are the last two properties in this corner of the county that are zoned FR nineteen that are, you know, undeveloped and without any proposals. You know, again, there's FR nineteen property just south of the adjacent property to the south on on Sunridge, but that's within the plan development, and the golf courses on some of that property, part of that was the open space for that plan development. So this is the only two lots left in the area there. And again, there's more dense development yet yet to be built out, but of the one-acre density, a single-family estate's land use, there's not much of it in the North County.
This is Kirk Walder for the record. Thank you, Sam. Brian, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, that is it.
Okay. Anybody else on the Planning Commission have questions? If we don't have other questions, I think maybe the best way to go about this is to see if we can have a motion on the table in a second. And then after we have a motion in a second, we can have further discussion where planning commissioners can discuss any of the the specific findings on the first motion, and then we can move to the second motion.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to put up those those motions?
Yes, please, Sam, if you can put those on the screen. And again, they're on packet page one hundred of the Planning Commission packet. So if there's a a individual who'd like to make a motion at this point, I'd be happy to recognize anybody on the Planning Commission.
I will make the motion.
Maureen, you're recognized.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero one, a master plan future land use map amendment to change thirty-nine point four acres from forest and range to single-family estates. Future land use based on the ability to make the required findings. Community Development's staff report and the evidence presented.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there a second?
All second.
Brian seconds the motion. So the motion is to approve the resolution for the master plan land use amendment. And I would now call for discussion on any of the findings or people's views. Maureen, you're recognized and supporting your motion.
Well, I would have preferred that the Board of Commissioners had given staff the opportunity to redo the Northwest Area Plan, so we could have a complete look at what was going on in this area. In not having that, I do believe that this rezoning and master plan amendment do fit nicely in the transition between what's happening at Valley Knowles and Big George and the Ag and Correctional Facility on the other side. I think it makes for nice feathering, so I will support this.
Thank you, Maureen. Are there other members of the Planning Commission that we wish to speak on the motion? Brian, you're recognized.
Brian Owen, for the record, basically, I mirror what Maureen is saying. I do like the feathering, you know, as we move towards the open space, you know, gathering larger parcels as we move towards the open space, so, you know, makes a lot of sense. Not to mention, you know, we don't need any more eight thousand or twelve thousand square foot lots here, and I think this puts a kind of a cap on the number of people going in that area, so I support this.
This is Kirk Walder. Brian, thank you very much. Any other members of the Planning Commission wish to comment at this point? I would go ahead and add my support. I think it does meet all of the required findings that are listed in the staff report on page one eleven and one one twelve. I would also note that we did receive a public comment from the the owner of the property in the south. I believe his name was Doug Hill, who said that he did not have any objections to this point, and I'm glad he was able to weigh in. That gives us an added comfort zone, so I I would be in support of the the master plan amendment at this point. Other members of the Planning Commission, Sam Taylor, did you have a comment that you wanted to add at this point?
Yes, Sam Taylor, District Attorney's Office for Douglas County. I just wanted to remind the commission that this is a master plan amendment and requires a two-thirds majority to pass.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else wish to speak on the on the motion? If if no other people wish to speak on the motion at this time, I can call the call the question. Okay, as Sam Taylor said, we would need a two-thirds vote on this. So again, I'll call the roll. And if you could indicate if you're in favor of the recommended motion that's on the screen, vote aye. If you're opposed to the motion on the screen, vote nay. And Christie, we'll start with you.
Aye.
And Bryce, you're next.
Aye.
And Maureen, we'll go to you.
Aye.
And David Cola?
Nay.
And Mark?
Aye.
And Brian?
Aye.
And the chair would vote aye. So on this vote, we have six ayes and one nay, and David Cola is the nay. So the motion to approve the master plan amendment is approved. So now we'll go to a motion and discussion on the zoning map amendment. If there, if Sam, you've got that up there, very good, thank you very much. If there's a member who would care to make a motion on the zoning map amendment. Brian, I see you're highlighted, or Maureen, whoever, I'd like to go first.
Um, it, my only comment is I like this cleanup that we're doing. Forest and range does not fit here any longer. So if there's no other comments by any other commissioners with regards to this motion, I will read it, and then we can have comments after. I move to recommend conditional approval of zoning map amendment ordinance twenty twenty dash fifteen sixty-eight to the Board of Commissioners to change thirty-nine point four acres from FR nineteen to SFR one based on the ability to make the required findings. Community Development's staff report and the evidence presented.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there a second? I will second the motion. So Maureen has moved, and Kirk Walder has seconded the motion to recommend conditional approval of the zoning amendment. Is there discussion on the zoning map amendment? Again, the findings are in the packet, I believe, starting on page one twelve, A through D. Are there members that wish to discuss those findings or this motion? Dave, I can't see you on the screen. Any comments on your end?
Yes, I don't believe that there is shown a need for additional housing, and I still don't believe that there is adequate water to provide another, instead of going to two, two, two units to thirty-nine units, an extra thirty-seven units. I don't think that has been shown.
Thank you very much, Dave. Other comments from members of the Planning Commission? I would go ahead and add then that I do find the the findings to have been met. And I would be in favor of this conditional approval zoning map amendment. Other comments? Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move the motion that Maureen has made. And we'll take a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion recommended, say aye. All opposed, say nay. And Christie, we'll start with you.
Aye.
And Bryce?
Aye.
And Maureen?
Aye.
And Dave?
Nay.
And Mark?
Aye.
And Brian?
Aye.
And the chair would vote aye. So again, on this vote, there would be six ayes and one nay, with the nay being David Cola, so the motion passes. Thank you very much, Keith. And Mr. Conroy, we'll move on now to the second item on our agenda. And this is again for possible action. Discussion on ordinance twenty twenty dash one five six nine to amend section twenty point six five eight point oh two oh of the Douglas County Code relative to non-residential permitted, development permitted, and special use permit use tables to allow craft foods or alcoholic beverages, small, with a special use permit in the mixed-use MUC zoning district, and to denote that a large-size facility is not permitted in the mixed-use commercial zoning district and other properly related matters. Sam, I see you have the slide up there, so if you would like to start the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. Item number two on the agenda today is a zoning text amendment as it relates to craft foods and alcoholic beverages in the use table in our code. Just to give you a little bit of a background in discussion of how this item started and came to light. In January of this year, we had a prospective tenant of the Ironwood Center, Shoe Tree Brewing Company. They requested a pre-application meeting with community development staff in order to assess the requirements for locating a small brew pub in this commercial center, which is on the west side of three ninety-five and south of Ironwood Drive, just actually south of of the movie theater there. The, throughout that meeting and reviewing their wishes for the site and the zoning, we determined that the the definition of their proposed use would best meet the definition in code for craft foods and alcoholic beverages per Douglas County Code Title Twenty. So you can see that definition on the screen here is a commercial establishment for the production of craft foods or alcoholic beverages, including a facility in which foods or alcoholic beverages for human consumption are processed to a final form and is distributed to customers on-site or to retailers or wholesalers. And then it even calls out examples include bakeries, brew pubs, creameries, or craft distilleries. So it seemed pretty clear that 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 was the best definition for their use. They are asking to produce beer at this location and to serve it to customers on the site. So once we determined that, we took a look at the use table in in Douglas County Code, and this is a copy of it here. You can see the definition there at the bottom, craft foods or alcoholic beverages. There's there's two uses described in the code, a large use or a small use. Small is is basically ten thousand square feet or less, and there's some parameters to that versus the large. But in the mixed-use commercial, I have it highlighted there, there's an X, and which means it's not permitted within the zoning district. So we pointed out that the table does not allow craft foods and alcoholic beverages in the MUC district. However, the use is allowed in several other similar districts, most notably, and the applicant, you know, pointed this out, and we had a discussion about this, was in the neighborhood commercial, the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District, there's an X slash S with a footnote there, number eight, and we can, I'll I'll show you here in a minute. The number eight describes that only a small-size use is allowed. The S stands for a special use permit is required. So if they were in a neighborhood commercial zoning, they would be required to be limited to a small-size brew pub. And they would also have to come to the Planning Commission to get approval for a special use permit. But in in the mixed-use commercial, it's not allowed. Similarly to that, in the general commercial zoning district, you can see the the D here in the code means design review only. So that's a staff review, just to make sure that they meet parking requirements, setbacks, architectural features, those type of things, but doesn't doesn't require any public hearings. In the tourist commercial, again, it's it's permitted with just a design review. In light industrial and in service industrial, again, permitted with just a design review. So we really had a conversation about why is it that the use code looks this way? Why is it that in neighborhood commercial, with a special use permit, you could locate versus in mixed-use commercial, it's not allowed in the code? And so in order to to further that discussion, I just want to show you the site here. Want to just point out that this is a zoning text amendment that would affect the county code countywide, is not site-specific to their location. But I just want to point out their their location again for background and how we got to this discussion here. So they are located where you see the gold star there, and they are proposing to locate in the suite nearest the movie theater. The movie theater is this building right here. Let me see, just north of the star. But you can see the the entrance off of three ninety-five and the parking area in front of the building. If you know the layout of that area there, to the north is the building with Big Five Sporting Goods, tile, the tile center there in the corner. At the far north, up at Ironwood, is the Mexican restaurant. I believe there's a Chinese restaurant in the hotel. So the point of the map on the right is is the existing zoning in place, is that really that entire development is split zoned between neighborhood commercial. neighborhood commercial and mixed use commercial. And you can see that in the two colors on the map there. So if the applicants were to propose locating in the commercial building there next to Big Five Sporting Goods within the neighborhood commercial zoning, they could request a special use permit and go before the Planning Commission with that request. But in their existing building there, they're not permitted to, you know, to move forward with any application. The same could be said is out, out front here closer to three ninety-five. The two out buildings says, I believe Starbucks and Dairy Queen, you know, those are occupied at this time, but it, you know, if Dairy Queen moved out, let's say, in a brew pub wanted to locate there, they could request a special use permit and locate in that building just across the parking lot from this, this site here. And so we really had a discussion about why is it more appropriate to be, you know, in these areas versus in the strip center that's just adjacent to them here? What's the character difference there? Again, just the history, I believe of how the site developed this way is that you can see this is a mixed use commercial with a planned development overlay. And the mixed use commercial was, was done this way in that the apartment buildings to the south were the residential component of the mixed use commercial. So that definition code allows you to have residential uses and commercial uses in that district. So there's a residential component to the south near the high school here, the apartment buildings. And the commercial component is in the Ironwood Center is the movie theater in the parking areas here. Otherwise, I think it'd be very likely that this, you know, this site would be zoned neighborhood commercial. And from a land use planning perspective, I think typically a neighborhood commercial zoning is one that is located closer to your residential areas, churches, schools, parks, and is more sensitive to, you know, hours of operation or the types of uses or businesses that are allowed in that area. Mixed use commercial, typically you, we would see office space or coffee shop or, you know, those type of uses on the first floor with apartments and residential space on the second floor ideally. And maybe you would see that more in some of the developments in downtown Minden, downtown Gardenville. Definitely you see some of that, but it's actually not zoned mixed use commercial for the most part in those areas. And a lot of the mixed use commercial we've seen build out through the county has been this way, that one portion of a site is residential, the other portion of a site is commercial. Again, throughout our discussion with the applicant, they said, you know, another use that's similar to them would be Bentley Heritage, the Bentley Heritage Distillery in downtown Minden. So I wanted to show the zoning map for more downtown Minden here. So that question came up and you can see, again, Bentley's site is with, indicated with the gold star there. The zoning on the property is general commercial. And so per that table that I showed you earlier, they were just required to come in and get a design review from staff in order to locate their distillery and tasting room there. It is a little bit different of a, of a makeup, you know, and character and feel of this area. Of course, it's, it's fronts right on three ninety-five in Buckeye, but also they have service industrial zoning to the north on their same site there. Once again, the use table allows it in service industrial zoning with just a designer view. But as far as a character standpoint and, and makeup and nearby uses, you can see that just within a block, this kind of creamish color, beiges color is single family residential. So there's, there's residential uses just a block away from, from that site. Also, the Minden Town Park is the PF Public Facilities zoning here, which is again, within a block of, of that site there. So similar in that there's commercial uses with residential and public facilities uses nearby. But in this case, it's permitted by right with, you know, with just the staff review. What the applicant is proposing then and where they moved was that we had a discussion about the need or for, for that to remain or be changed or what might be appropriate. So at this time, they've proposed to amend the code. The existing language is here at the top, new language is proposed here at the bottom. So it would be striking the X and replacing that with an X slash S for special use permit, meaning that any use, again, with the footnote number eight here. And so now you can see we have the footnote included. Says craft foods or alcoholic beverages, large size or prohibited in the neighborhood commercial zoning. And we would add the language and the mixed use commercial zoning district. So again, these are for smaller sized establishments. They would still require a special use permit. The highlighted changes here would still require a special use permit and the Planning Commission would have the purview to hear those applications on a case by case or site by site basis. I've just pulled up this definition again of the craft foods and alcoholic beverages. This is a further breakdown of that definition. And this is of the, the small establishment. So described as production areas within these facilities are located with, in any of the allowed commercial zoning districts are limited to ten thousand square feet, which may include assembling, bottling, distilling, processing, warehousing. Would again point out that in the, in this small definition, they specifically list commercial uses as, as being an allowed area for this. Then there's more of a breakdown of how the site has to be designed and those type of things in the next few under this. But the applicant at this time is not proposing that any craft foods or alcoholic beverages used be located in the mixed use commercial zoning district, just a small use per this definition and again with a special use permit. So the findings for a zoning tax amendment, in Douglas County Code, this is twenty point six one oh oh five oh. There's four findings, A through D. These are described in your packet on page one fifty-four through one fifty-five. We believe the findings can be made to approve the proposed zoning tax amendment. Again, this would change the land use table to allow with a special, a use with a special use permit that's currently allowed in a zoning district, which is very similar in nature, that being the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The change will still provide the Planning Commission with the ability to review the application for any newly established craft food or alcoholic beverage in the mixed use zoning district. And have a recommended motion here when you are ready for it. That, that concludes all I have, but I do know the applicant should be on the line here with us, Ben Johnson, Ironwood Center LLC.
Yeah, Sam, I really appreciate your presentation. This is Ben Johnson. And I've also got my wife here in the room with me collectively. Together, we own the property through Ironwood Center. Also on the line, not with me, on the line is Paul Young, who is the owner of Shoe Tree Brewing. And first, I want to thank Sam, he's walked us through, helped us through this process. He's gone above and beyond in my opinion, just in explaining helpfulness and allowing me to pursue this as an owner applicant as opposed to having to retain professional staff to do it. So I just, I think that says a lot about Sam and I appreciate it. Big picture, why we applied is when we bought the center a year ago, we identified this is a potential unmet demand in the market area. It's a concept that's been received very well in Reno, in Carson, in Incline, South Tahoe, Truckee. But we haven't gotten these small scale brewing operations where people can come in and test. In our market area, we feel personally like people are leaving the market area to go to Carson, South Tahoe, Reno to get the service. So our thought was why not bring this to Douglas County? People clearly want it. It's been well received. Shoe Tree, in my opinion, has done the best of anyone in creating community around it in a very similar community that we have in Douglas. They've done it at the north end of Carson. So that's where we're at. I noticed that just because this concept didn't exist, it wasn't something that the zoning code anticipated. The city of Reno, the city of Sparks have modified their zoning text to allow for this use by right in the mixed use zoning district. The city of Sparks recently completed that. The city of Reno is in the process, but that's one of the recommendations in updating their zoning code. So that's what we're doing here, really, in my view, is just allowing the zoning code to grow with uses that weren't contemplated at the time the zoning code exists, was made. And just so you guys know, we could have worked through calling it a restaurant and a bar. That's what was previously in the suite was a Mexican restaurant. We have a full kitchen, type one hood in there, two bathrooms. But Shoe Tree said, you know, we're not in the business of making food. That's not what our core competency is. And we want instead to only brew and allow the existing restaurants there at Ironwood to serve the food, allow people to bring it in to the site as they do at their location in Carson. I said, you know, that makes a lot of sense to me. Let's do this right. Let's do what's necessary from the zoning perspective to try and pursue this, but let's not from the beginning shoestring them with fitting a concept into the existing zoning code. Let's take the time and see if we can get the zoning code modified to allow for what they've done in Carson was then successful. So that's really where we're at. I greatly appreciate your guys' time. I do have Paul Young on the line. He does want to say a few things as well. So I'm going to turn it over to him.
Hi, Paul Young here. We just wanted to say we're really looking forward to the potentially coming to Douglas County. Our business has thrived and grown in Carson City and a lot of our family lives in Douglas. And it just made sense for a natural next step for us as we grow our business. Working with Ben and Sam, you know, we really zeroed in on the site. We really like it. We love the parking. We love the location. The infrastructure, we're going to take the existing kitchen and plug in the brewery. It just fit a lot of our needs. And then things that we want to do for Douglas County, what we do in Carson City is we do a lot of giving back to our community, work with our community. We do fun things like called Helping Handles where we work with people, individuals and helping raise money. And we plan on bringing all that to Douglas County. And that's all I have. And I'm here for any questions you guys might need.
Thank you very much, Ben and Paul. This is Kirk Walder. Are there questions that Planning Commissioner members have of the applicant or of Sam at this point? I don't see any raised hands right now, but Ben, if I could ask you or Paul, I think I saw in the, the packet, Ben, you've owned this property for, for a year or more. Is that correct?
Yeah, we acquired title in January of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. And you own the entire shopping center area that's six or eight or ten units, something like that?
I do not own the entire shopping center. I just own the building this use is proposed for. It's a sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty square foot building divided into ten suites.
Ten suites. And the other suites, some are occupied and some are not occupied at this point?
Uh, no, every suite is occupied in the building today.
Oh, great. And then have you had any concern from any of your, the other tenants or any of the neighboring businesses or residents about what your plans are?
Zero. They're enthusiastically in support of it. You will get, if it's successful here, we'll come back before, as soon as the time allows us to apply for a special use permit. And at that time, I plan to submit letters from all of my tenants and the neighboring tenants, the movie theater, Dairy Queen, Starbucks with their support. I let them all in from the beginning and they're all very supportive. I just didn't feel today was the right time to bring forward those letters. I didn't want to confuse the issue because today we're just asking to amend the zoning code to allow us to apply for the special use permit. And then we'll have to be back before you at a later date to get that special use permit.
Yes, that was exactly the point I was going to make. We're just on the ordinance now. And then you'll be back before us at a future point after, after you check all the rest of the boxes. Anybody else on the Planning Commission have questions or comments? Dave, I can see your audio. Anything on your end?
No.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you, Dave. If not, Sam Booth, could we have the motion back on the screen? And I'll ask my colleagues if there's someone who would like to make the recommended motion. Bryce, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to recommend approval of ordinance two zero two zero dash one five six nine to the Board of County Commissioners to amend Douglas County Code Section two zero point six five eight point zero two zero based on the staff report, required findings, presentation and public comment.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Brian?
Brian with the second.
Okay, Bryce has moved and Brian has seconded the approval of the ordinance twenty twenty dash one five six nine. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we can proceed with the vote. All those in favor will vote aye and those opposed will vote nay. Christie?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Maureen? Maureen, I can see you, but I can't hear you. Can you unmute your microphone, Maureen, please?
Okay, aye. Excuse me.
Maureen is an aye. Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And the Chair would vote aye. On this vote, there'd be seven ayes and no nays. The motion is agreed to. We'll now move to agenda item number three, and this is on page one seventy of your packets. And I'll read it into the record for possible action. A resolution advising the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County to ask the advice of the registered voters of Douglas County as to vote to authorize the county to levy an additional sales and use tax in the amount of one quarter of one percent point zero zero two five to exclusively finance the preservation of open agricultural land, undeveloped natural landscape, stream corridors, natural shoreline, ridges and other land exclusively devoted to open space through a purchase of development rights program in accordance with the county's open space plan. And Sam, I believe you have a presentation and then we can move to other presentations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. Just to recap this item and why it's on the agenda here today. At a joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission, as the members would remember, that was, that meeting was March tenth. A discussion was held regarding the need for a ballot initiative to fund the purchasing of open space in the county. That time, there was much discussion about it. We had several members requested that an item be placed on the April Planning Commission agenda for discussion with the potential of that discussion moving on to the Commissioners. NRS authorizes the county commissioners to ask the advice of the, the voters on any question under which the board has consideration adoption of a resolution. So this agenda item here today, again, was just, came out of that joint meeting on March tenth about the need for a ballot initiative for purchasing of open space. And if the Planning Commission were to approve this, it would be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for a discussion on approval or disapproval. That would be at their May seventh, twenty twenty meeting. And I believe I can turn this over to either Maureen Casey or Mark Nedden Rip that have been heading this item up and they have Jacque Etchegoyen on the line as well, I believe, to speak further.
Two, this is Maureen Casey for the record. To briefly bring you up to how we got here. It started with a conversation with Mark Nedden Rip with regards to the TDR program and the push that we're getting from the citizens of Douglas County with regards to maintaining our open space and preserving our ag lands. We started talking. We have a wonderful group of people advising us on this. And the overwhelming support that we're getting from the community says we need to do this and we need to do it now. For this item, we have Jacques, Jacques Etchegoyen, who's a former county commissioner and runs a business dealing with creating conservation easements to speak for us and make our main presentation. And then Mark will follow him.
Thank you, Maureen. Can you, everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jacques Etchegoyen. I own Legacy I own Legacy Land and Water, a small land use consulting firm that specializes in land and water conservation. Senator Paul Laxalt was instrumental in getting me started in this business nearly twenty years ago. I've lived in Carson Valley for more than sixty years, received my planning degree from UC Davis, ranch for thirty-three years here in Carson Valley, was on the Planning Commission for a term and was a county commissioner for three terms. When Douglas County adopted the first master plan in Nevada in nineteen sixty, the writer Ray Smith envisioned linear parks along many of the watercourses in the county. Ray was a Douglas resident for many years, a Harvard educated planner, and also penned the first Washoe County Master Plan as well as the first Tahoe Regional Plan. Not mode of conservation easements uh then or the concept of forever leaving ranchland in private working food producing hands. In nineteen eighty, Douglas adopted a new master plan and downzoned more than sixty thousand acres of ranch and farmland. This reduced the development potential by an astonishing fifty-seven thousand houses, a billion dollar taking in today's market. The commission said at the time the county would find a way to compensate the ranchers. That commission never did. You can. In nineteen ninety-six, Douglas again adopted a new master plan, including a transfer of development rights and aggressive cluster subdivision components. Soon after, the county was approached by the State Director of the BLM to see about federal acquisition of conservation easements on ranches. Between the federals and local programs as well as gracious conservation easement donations, Douglas has about ten thousand acres of ranchland forever protected with the water rights also forever tied to that land. Other land conservation projects in the county add another sixteen thousand acres. Uh, two recent ranches were added to be funded by the BLM and the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act and in in process of acquisition. Lampy, Herbig, Johnson, Chichester, Kimmerling, Sorensen, Motts, James Canyon are ranches that are gone with subdivisions and streets named for them. Douglas now issues about a hundred and eighty building permits a year and the T D R program is idle. BLM would prefer not to buy any more conservation easements. Douglas still has land to conserve and tie the water to it forever. Ranchettes, often really weedettes, nineteen acre parcels are now selling for an average of seven hundred thousand dollars each. Yeah, that's more than thirty-five thousand dollars an acre. Too big to mow, too small to plow. I recently heard of a nineteen acre landowner preparing to build a six thousand square foot house, a forty-five thousand square foot indoor riding arena, a few outbuildings, and a ten thousand square foot shop. Now imagine trying to see Job's Peak around two thousand five hundred of those in in the Carson Valley. Water has always been precious in our state. Dayton Silver Springs are booming. They are on the Carson River and thousands of acre feet of water rights from our beautiful county have already been moved. Buying conservation easements ties the water to the ranches forever. Asquaga, Housman, Byington, Bentley, White, Hennington, Vansicle Station, Gale Tighe, Ranch Number One, Sturgis, Dryer, Clear Creek, Tahoe, and others have already either have already participated or desire to. Imagine if you dare an emerald oasis adjacent to the Great Basin Desert with a snowy Sierra behind two hundred years from now. Food forever, a Nevada sanctuary. Water and zoning always run uphill in money. Let's create an alternative. The quality of life in our community has always been measured by the number of cows per acre. Let the voters decide to save this emerald oasis oasis called Douglas County. I appreciate everyone's time and the public service and I would a- answer any questions. I'm kind of feeling like the old guy and that scares me a little bit on this uh planning stuff in Douglas.
Uh, thank you very much, Jacque. Uh, Mark, did you have comments that you wanted to add at this point?
Uh, certainly. So like Jacque, I believe it's time to let the citizens of Douglas County decide if they want to preserve the open space that will protect the rural character of the valley, provide wildlife habitat, and maintain the rich agricultural heritage that many citizens moved to Carson Valley to enjoy. What I want to do is speak about what I see presently happening in the valley and explain to the Planning Commission and anybody that's listening in while why the T D R program alone is not going to protect the valley. So they say a picture is worth a thousand words. So I want to show you what's happening on the south side of Fairview Lane. So Sam, if you can bring up the Fairview Lane pictures that I gave to you and just slowly scroll through them. So basically, for those of you uh Fairview Lane is a very short roadway between Highway eighty-eight and Fort Hill Road. It is approximately a half a mile or so long. Um, I couldn't get any exact measurements because all cars now just only have odometers that roll every mile instead of every tenth of a mile. But um as you look at these, basically what has happened is there have been twenty acre parcels created the entire south side of Fairview Lane. Most of these parcels you'll see contain a large house, a guest house in some cases, one barn, maybe a another outbuilding and maybe detached garage. So basically, while these are very, very nice to look at, you can't see the open ranchland behind them. And while they're very encouraging for the um Douglas County um assessor to assess these and help increase Douglas County property taxes, they really don't protect open space. So Sam, if you can now bring up the photo of the east side of Highway eighty-eight, I'd like to show you basically. Yeah, that's it. Thanks, Sam. Basically, this is what open space looks like. This is the ranch that I believe is owned by Jessica Ledbetter. It's called the Thunderbird Ranch. Um, and you can see there isn't a house to be seen there. Now, if you were to drive from Fairview Lane north to the Carson River, which is approximately a mile or so, this is the east side. When you look at the west side, on my drive, I counted over fifteen different residences. So don't we want to preserve open space to look like this picture versus uh nineteen twenty acre parcels that basically block out everybody's view? Uh, the jewel of the valley, Sam, if you want to look at the Bentley Ranch now for me and the Park Ranch, which are just north. So this is the Bentley Ranch, yeah, or well, I should say it's a very small part of the Benton Ranch, but it is just as you're leaving Minden heading towards Carson. It's on the east side of the highway. It used to be part of the old Danberg Ranch and the parks are on the west side of the highway. And uh that's the Park Ranch and you can see that, yes, again, there's no houses to be seen. To me, this is the jewel of the Carson Valley. This is what everybody comes to Carson Valley and wants to enjoy. Um, I've heard from a lot of people that commute from Carson City in Reno back into Carson Valley and they say when they hit this stretch of the road, all of their stress is relieved. So this is what I think we really want to protect. Uh, what I'd like to go on now is to explain to you why T D Rs alone won't work. So basically, the T D R program has protected approximately four thousand acres. However, there hasn't been a SNU certified T D R in Carson Valley since two thousand and nine. Personally, I believe that um there are two problems here. Number one, T D Rs, I believe, should be required for every single zone change, not just resident, not just um receiving areas. And secondly, I'm going to walk you through a computation that shows you why I believe T D Rs are not economical. Basically, if I was advising a rancher, I would tell him, sell the nineteen acre parcel. You're going to get a lot more money. And uh when you do sell that, always sell it at the furthest downstream portion of your ranch that you can sell. So Sam, if you want to bring up the T D R sale versus the nineteen acre sale, uh basically, this sale has several assumptions. They may be right, they may be wrong. Um, but basically, I want to walk you through the T D R program and how people create these bonuses. So basically, if you have a nineteen acre parcel, you have one development right. However, let's assume for this example that you have over eight hundred acres that are all contiguous, that are all irrigated and you want to put all of these into a conservation easement. And lo and behold, all of these acres also happen to be in the flood plain. So we're giving you the maximum T D R bonuses that you can receive. So as you can see that you get a bonus if you participate in a program of nine units. We said that all of this land was in the flood plain, so you're going to get another seven units. Um, if you tie the water in perpetuity to the land, the program gives you another seven units. And then if you're conserving over a hundred acres at a time, you get another bonus of four units. That adds up to twenty-eight total bonus uh T D Rs. Now, when we look at the number of acres preserved and the number of T D Rs that were used, we know that the average is a lot closer to twenty-one. So basically, I'm going to tell you that a lot of the T D Rs that have been created are not in the flood plain. The second thing that we want to look at is, you know, Jacque just said that he's seen um twenty acre or nineteen acre ranchettes that are selling for seven hundred thousand dollars. Well, in my example, I just assumed six hundred. Thing and in my example uh development potential in this example. Um, if we use the maximum T D Rs, again, you're going to need about eighteen thousand per T D R before it's advantageous for a rancher to participate currently in the T D R program versus selling a nineteen acre parcel. So there are other problems with nineteen acre parcels. Jacque referred to them as weedettes. That phrase was coined by former county commissioner Kelly Kite. Uh, basically, what it comes down to is many of the purchasers of these nineteen acre parcels have not been in Douglas County very long. They do not understand the Alpine decree. They do not understand weed abatement and they certainly don't understand irrigation ditch maintenance. When I was talking about if I was advising a rancher, you'd want to put the nineteen acre parcel on the piece of property you have that is the furthest downstream. Well, that's exactly what happens. If you have nineteen acre parcels that are upstream of the large landowner, that just makes their job to continue ranching a whole lot more difficult because they have to deal with a lot of small property owners that really don't have a lot of experience uh in, as I said, irrigation ditch maintenance and uh weed control. So basically, I urge the other members of the Planning Commission to give the voters of Douglas County the right to choose. Um, I'd like to turn it back to the chair to see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much, Mark. Uh, all good presentations, Maureen and Jacque as well. Thank you for uh for your input on this. I'll open it up to uh comments or questions from uh the other Planning Commissioner members. Uh Bryce, I see your hand raised. Uh, would you go ahead, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bryce Klutz for the record. Jacque or Mark, if if either one of you, if my understanding is back in two thousand that the ag community didn't support this and my my question is, is that true? Number one. And number two, if so, what changed between then and now?
Uh, I'll take that if that's okay with you, Jacque.
Absolutely.
So yes, back in two thousand, the agricultural community, I was on a board, narrowly voted not to support the tax increase because they did not want to have a tax increase. At that time, they did believe that the T D R program would take care of them, that the commissioners would make good on their promise in nineteen eighty and uh find a substitute for value and have to take away all of their uh development rights. I actually was elected chairman of that committee and you will see if you go back and look through some of the records, although I supported this tax personally. I was very vocal in uh putting forth the agricultural community's uh support that said they didn't want to have another tax. Since that time, uh the Farm Bureau has, and it should be in your packet, uh come out and the Farm Bureau Board unanimously unanimously supported uh putting this on the ballot and letting the voters decide.
Did that interest you? If you had other questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark, for clarifying that. Uh, this question may be more for Sam Taylor. When I, when I look at the the title for possible action, it says to exclusively finance the preservation of open space. One of the concerns I have is anytime there's a tax, there's the potential of government to divert those funds to the general fund during rainy days or or other circumstances. And so one of my concerns is will in fact this and we don't, we don't have the ballot initiative, so we can't read it. We don't know what it says, which is a little bit concerning, not terribly concerning, but will this be exclusively for the preservation of open space or could it be diverted to the general fund?
Uh, Sam Taylor, uh DA's office for Douglas County. Um, until I see the text of the initiative, I can't really answer that question, Bryce. I just, I I don't know what was, what would be included in there, how they would uh describe the lockbox, uh what provisions would be uh applicable to it. So in the absence of having the initiative language, I I really can't answer that question.
Bryce Klutz again for the record. Uh, I'm sorry, Maureen. I just wanted to follow up on that one point. Is it possible that in in our recommendation that we can stipulate that it be written in such a way that it is that that our recommendation is exclusively for the preservation of open space? Is that possible?
Uh, Sam Taylor again for uh Douglas County DA's office. Uh, yes, that could be included. That language could be included in the motion to to basically have your recommendation be that it being the the proceeds of the tax be in a lockbox exclusively used for the purposes of uh conservation.
Uh, thank you, Sam. Uh, Maureen, did you have a response?
Yes, one of the reasons why we are proposing an open space and an ag preservation district is because when the money goes into a district, it is specifically isolated for whatever purpose that district was created. There was discussion amongst us and we do understand that when times get tough, if it's not segregated, those funds are tapped for general fund purposes. We don't want that to happen. There will be a time limit on this district, probably about twenty years for collecting the funds, at which time it can be reauthorized by the voters if we haven't succeeded in protecting as much land as we want. There is also the reason there's no ballot initiative in front of you is because we were not sure whether or not the Board of Commissioners would approve putting this on the ballot or if it even get through the Planning Commission. So we felt it was more appropriate to get it through the Planning Commission. Then there will be a ballot initiative written and a ballot argument created to present to the Board of Commissioners for their deliberations and conversation in May. Being the policy board, we felt it was more appropriate for them to have that discussion rather than the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Maureen. Bryce, did you want to follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Maureen, when I read the resolution number P C two zero two zero dash zero two, it it does state whereas the enabling legislation requires that any voter approved tax revenue must only be used to finance the acquisition, development, maintenance, and use of open space land. Does this resolution address the district? And and is this what we'll be recommending? What's the, what's the next step? Again, I just want to make sure that the recommendation clearly states from my perspective that it's exclusively for the use of the preservation of open space.
Bryce, you are correct. There is nothing in here that says creation of a district and we can amend the motion to say that. This predominantly is the enabling legislation to get the funding. But amending the uh resolution to include the creation and funding of an open space and agricultural preservation district is perfectly is perfectly adequate and acceptable.
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions or comments from the members of the planning commission? Brian?
Brian Olin here. You know, and looking at a district, you know, I, you know, still, even if we put it in a district, you know, I, you know, East Fork Fire District, you know, East, you know, East Fork Swimming Pool District. These all pay people. There's staff involved. You know, when we create a quarter cent sales tax, I'm not hearing anybody who makes these decisions. I mean, who decides who gets the money? I mean, I understand, Mr. Booth, we have a master plan or a land use plan from two thousand and seven. Maybe you can bring me up to date as to what exactly that plan entails and what we would be using these funds. I mean, other than just preserving open space. I mean, I feel like that's a very general statement, and how it's going to be applied is completely absent from this conversation.
Well, one more thing to consider is, these questions are good, but they are the purview of the policy board. For us to suppose that we know the way this is going to be implemented and created is, it's premature at this point. We have to work with the board and with staff and with the district attorney's office to craft the language that will create the district. I know districts that are in effect that are running with a minimum of two staff members, the full-time manager, his assistant, and then they work in cooperation with the real estate community and the ag communities in order to find the parcels to get the conservation easements. Those are all things that will come before the ballot measure gets to the Board of Commissioners. But at this point, it's simply the planning commission making the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Jacque, do you have anything to add?
No, I, that covers it.
Thank you, Maureen. Brian, go ahead.
So basically, I feel like, I mean, I know I'm not opposed to giving this to the voters. You know, I don't want to be one of seven people that says no and, you know, be that one person. I think, you know, it's our responsibility to give this to the voters when it is a sales tax type issue and not be that final, you know, word on this. Though at the same time, I'm kind of concerned that the administration of the program, you know, like Bryce is saying, we don't have language in here to me that, you know, enabling legislation that must be used. I mean, how is used? You know, there's a lot of things in here that I think are missing. You know, not just possibly in the resolution, but I mean, things that could easily be overlooked when you guys create a ballot measure. You know, and if these things, we say yes today, and we get a ballot measure that, you know, we don't agree with, all we get is one vote on no. You know, I'm kind of disappointed that we don't even see a ballot measure, you know, possibly a draft or anything in front of us to say yes to. You know, granted, I don't want to restrict the public from being able to say yes either. So, you know, that's just my points on this.
I think what's missing is the enabling legislation is the legislation that comes from the NRS. It's not our Douglas County legislation. The NRS does state that we can create a fund to purchase open space if we have an approved open space plan, which we do have in our master plan. So if that is the sticking point, what the enabling legislation is, it is the Nevada revised statutes. It's not Douglas County.
I'm, I'm actually kind of pointing to the second half of the sentence where it's news, you know, the finance of the acquisition, development, maintenance, and use of open space land, you know. There's a lot of interpretation, and as an accountant, we would seek every way to get the money out of it before it actually went to pay the farmer because, you know, we want to get paid on those items too. And if allowed, we would stick our hands in the pot as well. I mean, Mr. Achigoyan's here, and he's talking about this as well, and I'm sure he'd be paid on, possibly somehow on these projects where conservation easements are created. So, you know, we're hearing from people that are, you know, possibly paid in this situation. And, you know, to me, it's how do we restrict who is putting their hands in this pot is really the thing I'm concerned with. I want the farmers to get paid, but I want the farmer to get paid every, is what I want, you know, kind of pointing towards.
Yes, and I understand and I recognize your concerns. They are concerns that are shared by all of us. And before May, when it goes to the Board of Commissioners, all your concerns, to the best of our ability, will be addressed.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Maureen. Mark, go ahead.
Yes, Maureen, I think it would be helpful for Brian and the rest of the board members if you could expand a little bit on, I know that this is not written, but we have talked to many other districts that have this same type of legislation where they do collect money for open space. And Maureen's probably better qualified to talk on that than I am, but they all seem to have separate boards. Most of those boards are appointed by the county commissioners. So they have a board that decides how to prioritize and which properties are the ones that, you know, are the most important to go after. In my opinion, that would be those in the floodplain because we do have a fat passive floodplain. We know that Reno spent hundreds and hundreds of millions on their South Reno flood control channel. Then the second thing that most of these other counties or districts that we've talked to, they seem to also have a second board that just looks at the finances and says, this is only for preserving open space. This cannot be used for any other source whatsoever. But Maureen, if you would want to talk about those, I think you're probably better qualified than I am.
We have had the most contact with is in Sonoma County, California. Their legislation was passed in two steps. They had in nineteen ninety, one measure that created the district and another that authorized the funding. After it was passed unanimously by the voters, the Board of Supervisors at that time appointed a, a board of advisory members in which every city that is registered in the county, there were seven of them, had one member as well as four members from the general public. On top of that, they created the Open Space Authority. They looked at the recommendations from the advisory committee as to what properties fall in the priority plan, which meet the criteria for preservation. And the authority decides whether or not it is appropriate for acquisition. Their recommendations go to the Board of Supervisors. The whole purpose is to have the three-step process in order to ensure that everything is following the legislation that established the district and preserves open space for the most part, not just a little piece of property that may become a road at some time in the distant future. If it's in the sphere of influence of any one of the cities, it does not get funding, not in the beginning for the first twenty years. For continuity's sake, there is a list of priorities, and there is an application that needs to be completed. People who fill the application get scrutinized by the director as to whether or not they fulfill the list of priorities. Are they under immediate threat of development? Are they properties that have qualities that deserve protection? Are they in the floodplain? Are they prime agricultural areas? Do they have habitat that needs protecting? In Douglas County, we have the sage grouse. We have raptors. We have natural plants. We have the butterfly flyways. All these are worthy of protection. Is it a viewscape? As Mark's photos showed, we have Highway three ninety-five and Highway eighty-eight that all need protection from these little ranchettes that are going to pop up as people exit states with a lot of equity. What they want is their piece of land, but as Mark stated, they don't know how to protect it. All these things will come up, and I promise, will come up in one sheet before the Board of Commissioners. I don't know what else to tell you, but I know that for over thirty years, the district in Sonoma County has saved over seven hundred thousand acres of agriculture and open space and scenic corridors with partnerships with the Land Trust Partnership with other open space districts, the State of California, the federal government. These are all things that we will have access to if we have our own funding plan. Our Board of Commissioners will create an advisory committee. They will have an open space authority that monitors the money. The Board of Commissioners, because they are the policy board, will have final say. But the way it will be set up is that you have a three-step process, so the Board of Commissioners can't get their hands on the money to perhaps finance a greenway between a neighborhood. That's not what the purpose of this is for. I know I'm a little confused because I didn't expect to come up with this, but I promise before May comes through, the Board of Commissioners will have all these things itemized and laid out in front of them.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much, Maureen. Brian, did you have one more follow-up or two?
So maybe this is a question for Jacques, and maybe he can answer. But what's the history of land? You know, once the current owner living on the land, you know, creates a conservation easement, if he moves off that property, you know, is that value decreased? Do we have to have another rancher buy it, or is it, you know, almost just become useless because no one's going to use it if there's not a rancher on?
That's a very, very good question because these conservation easements do run in perpetuity. What happens is if a rancher decides he or she wants to move on from that business, it can be sold as a ranch, and we've actually seen a number of cluster subdivisions in Douglas County where the original person who placed the conservation easement for, you know, was paid to or donated. If they want to move on, you can sell the property subject to that conservation easement. And what we're finding here in Douglas County is because it's so productive, there are folks on just the other side of the hill that would lease every acre in Douglas County and would buy every acre in Douglas County at more, closer to its pure ag value, which after conservation easement would be the case. So we've seen quite a few ranches change hands after conservation easements. And things are, you know, they look the same, they manage the same, the water's tied to the land, and there's still very significant economic incentives to continue to ranch. So essentially, property can be sold, but it's like having a Nevada energy easement for a power line. That goes with the property forever, but it does not impair your ability to manage the land. And so as a tool around the United States, it's turned out to be an exceptionally good one. And Mark may absolutely understands this better than I do, but it can be a wonderful family planning tool. What happens, and I've had many clients where you have, let's just say you have four family members, and three of them don't want to be ranchers. Well, guess what? They're land poor, and the only way to divvy things up fairly is to sell the ranch. We've seen that happen time and time again. And with the conservation easement sale, what they can do is compensate the three who don't want to stay in ranching and work out a family formula with capital. And you know better than I, you know, capital can solve some problems that land poorness can't. And so again, we've seen lots of ranches sell subject to conservation easements, and the story is ending well all over the United States thus far, but very good question.
Thank you, Jock. Christie or Dave, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
I don't have any.
Thank you, Dave. Christie, anything to add or any questions do you want to raise?
The only thing I had is I agree with Bryce in the sense that just making sure the general fund can't dip their hands into it.
Great, thank you very much. I would just add a couple of comments. I think the presentations were all very good, and I think what I heard at the joint meeting that we had with the Board of County Commissioners is they did want just this kind of discussion to go on. They wanted us to explore the ideas. They wanted us to weigh in on whether the basic proposition was a good one. And I think I would support the basic proposition. And I think, Maureen, you've made some very good points that now, as we move this forward, we'll flush it out in more detail. We'll give ideas and recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. They can certainly add their in point, input to the process. And then eventually, if they approve it, it will then go to a group that'll write the proposal that will be on the ballot. So I do see this as a, as a good part of the discussion. We're laying a foundation. We're putting forth a record on this issue, and then it'll continue on with the, with the next steps. So I think everybody's made good comments and good presentations, and I think it's been a good discussion. So at this point, if there's no other questions or comments, Maureen, did you want to read into the record the entire resolution as it's printed on our packet page, one seventy-two and seventy-three? Or would you prefer to just go ahead and make a motion at this point?
Well, I can, I can read the topic of the resolution and waive the reading of the text. Do we want to add in Bryce's concerns about the creation of a district?
I'll leave that up to you or the motion. Bryce, did you have a comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only comment on that is, unfortunately, I'm not up to speed completely on districts. I want to make sure that I'm not misunderstood. I have no interest in a tax that grows government and adds employees and does all of that. I'm interested in ensuring whatever that vehicle is, ensuring that this sales tax increase is specifically for the use that's outlined in the text at the top of the resolution. And I'll leave it up to the board to determine that, that vehicle. I think my, I think my sentiments are clear, and the record is where I stand with that. So, thank you.
Sam Taylor, do you have anything to add with regards to the language of the resolution?
Sam Taylor from District Attorney's Office. I would just note that the motion itself could include Bryce's concerns and perhaps even Brian's as well, trying to encapsulate those, you know, how you formulate that motion, you know, is maybe something that you might want to consider carefully to try to include those concerns that they have, if you wish to garner their support, obviously.
Well, I'd need a couple of minutes to put it together. Unless you have something, Kirk, that you have been crafting?
No, I'll defer to you or to Mark if you want to gather your thoughts and write something out along the lines of what Bryce or Brian have suggested. I think it can be general. Again, we're not, we're not creating law here. If you want to go ahead and do that, and I can ask maybe a question of Mark, if he's got a number in his head or maybe Jock does. Can, can either of you tell us maybe how much you think this additional sales tax would add or would raise in particular, one particular year? And then could you also maybe give us a ballpark figure as, as how much this might cost an average family in Douglas County with the increase in sales tax? Are those something that either you'd feel comfortable addressing?
I'll certainly address the possible revenue that this could generate. So I spoke to Kelly Langley at the Department of Taxation, and she said, based on the revenue projections for the fiscal two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty sales tax, that this would raise approximately two million and sixty thousand dollars. Now, remember, I said two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. We know what happened with COVID nineteen. And so nobody knows what this will raise, but my guess is it's going to raise substantially less than two million, maybe one and a half million or somewhere around that area. But the thing that we need to remember is in addition to whatever revenue is created from this tax, Jock can probably speak to it, but there's usually grant monies out there where people will do matching grants to help you acquire easements. So maybe we could take this, let's say it's a million and a half, and get another million and a half match from some other governmental agency. I'm glad to do the math, or Brian can do the math. He's the accountant. But, you know, we have to determine, how much do you think the average person spends in taxable sales? Remember, this does not count food. So in my household, what we're talking about is maybe cleaning supplies and So in my household, what we're talking about is maybe cleaning supplies and toys and clothing. And, you know, that's not going to be, I don't believe, a lot of money. If we were to say that that was $15,000 a year that you spent on taxable sales times .0025, says that's $37.50 that the average family would spend on this thing. Of course, I don't know if $15,000 is an accurate figure. The other thing that was certainly talked about during the 2000 ballot measure was that a vast majority of this tax was paid by tourists. And predominantly, it's the tourists up at Lake Tahoe. You know, heck, we don't even have a car dealership down in the valley, so there's not a whole lot of tax that's being paid other than, you know, we're trying to clean. And, you know, I'll defer to Brian if he knows a little bit more about what the average person spends on, you know, taxable sales or not.
Thank you very much. Brian, did you want to chime in or Jacque?
I mean, I'm not trying to be exact, but I'd say Mark is pretty accurate. You know, you really, you know, anybody making under $100,000, you know, tax-wise on a tax return, you're going to see between $1,000 and $2,000 of sales tax paid. You know, we're looking at about a 3% increase of, you know, the tax. So, you know, you're looking at 30, 36, 30 to 60 bucks maybe.
Thank you, Brian. And Mark, you make a good point that it's not just the Douglas County residents that are paying sales tax. We have a lot of out-of-county residents who will pay sales tax that, that will be affected here. Any other comments or questions? Maureen, are you close to pulling something together that you would want to offer?
I am thoroughly confused in trying to write this and get everything in. So I will attempt one and then please chime in and make amendments because I'm willing to amend the motion. I move adoption of a resolution advising the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County to ask the advice of registered voters of Douglas County as to vote to authorize the county to levy an additional sales tax and use tax in the amount of 1/4 of 1% to exclusively finance the preservation of open space, agricultural land, undeveloped natural landscape, stream corridors, corridors, natural shoreline, ridges, and other land exclusively devoted to, to open space through the creation of a district program to purchase development rights in accordance with the county's open space plan. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's very good. Bryce, did you have a, a comment on the motion? Or maybe we could move to a second, and then we can also have friendly amendments to that, or get Sam Taylor's opinion. But go ahead, Bryce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bryce, let's for the record, could you, Maureen, just after an other land exclusively devoted, could you read that again? I, I just wanted to make sure that it captured that this would be in accordance with the county's open space plan because the county already has a plan.
The county has the plan, but the county does not have a development rights program that is in a district because the funding would go into a district. So I didn't have the language. I kind of was on the fly there. Through the creation of a district to purchase development rights in accordance with the county's open space plan, that's the language I came up with.
Okay, Maureen, thank you. That, that sounds pretty good to me. Do we want to get a second and then we can ask Sam Taylor's opinion of whether we need to, to make a friendly amendment to, to modify any language? Is there a second to Maureen's motion, which is basically the, the resolution on the top of page 172 with the addition of the language that would say for creating a special district? Is there a second?
I'd like to make a second to that motion.
Mark seconds the motion. So we have a motion and a second, which basically consists of the resolution on the top of page 172. Could I ask Sam Taylor, does he think that's an acceptable motion for us to move forward on?
Yeah, it encapsulated the district concerns that Bryce had, I believe. Now, the, the question becomes, of course, how you write the initiative to incorporate the district and, and have it come to fruition. But I think for the purposes of a recommendation to the board, that is probably sufficient.
Excellent, Sam. As I said before, I think those are steps down the road to let the other people who are involved with those kinds of things consider those. So we have the motion, we have a second. Is there a discussion on the, on the motion? Brian?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, I'm, you know, in agreements that we should have the, you know, voters vote for this, you know. In saying what some of our favorite people say at our meetings, I do believe we are putting the cart before the horse. You know, we're kind of voting on something but not knowing anything that's tied behind it. We're trying to dial in language, and I just hope that, you know, exclusively really means exactly what I would believe exclusively means, and that we really do tie this so the ranchers are the people that benefit from this because I think they're the ones that deserve it.
Thank you, Brian. I think we've created a strong record on, on that issue, and I, I second your concerns and, and Bryce's as well. Other planning commissioners want to make comments or discuss the motion before us? David Cola, do you have anything?
I'm fine with it. No, I'm fine with it, it is.
Great, thank you very much. I don't want to exclude you because I can't see you here.
All right.
If there's no other, if there's no other discussion, then I will put the question on the motion offered by Maureen. All in favor will say aye and all opposed will say nay. And again, we'll take a roll call and we'll start with Christie.
Aye.
And Bryce?
Aye.
And Maureen?
Aye.
And Dave?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
And Brian?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So on this motion, there are seven ayes and no nays, and the motion is agreed to. And now I believe the next and last issue is a closing public comment. So we will now take closing, closing public comment. I believe the phone line has remained open during, during our meeting, but we will allow another five minutes for public comments. And I will note that the time is now 3:21. And Colleen, do you have public comments that you can play for us at this time?
I do. Just give me a second here.
Certainly.
Hi, my name is Doug Hill. I left a comment earlier about a project, but now I want to leave a comment about the... Hi, my name is Doug Hill. I left a comment earlier about a project, but now I want to leave a comment about the online program you're, you're providing for us. It is not coming through. We're not able to watch anything. It's typical hourglass, and we're watching it on three different computers at two different locations, and none of us are able to hear any comment or read anything that the gentleman was displaying on screen.
I have one more.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. We'll keep public comment open in response to Mr. Hill's comment. I did have the YouTube page on while we were proceeding. I did see the hourglass at one point, but I tried to look over from time to time, and I didn't see it at other times. I'm not a technological expert, so it may have just been a little bit of a bandwidth problem for some people at some locations. And I'm sure, I assure you that we'll try and get the staff to, to look at that as we move forward so that we can make sure it's accessible to everyone at all times. Anything else, Colleen, on your end?
No, but I've gotten several emails saying that they were able to watch it on YouTube just fine.
Okay, great. Well, as we keep public comment open for a couple of minutes, let me, let me make some closing comments. I do want to thank my colleagues in the Planning Commission for the extra effort that they've taken to participate in this meeting. I think it's been very fruitful and very productive. And I want to also thank the county staff for all the time and effort they've put in to allow our meeting to proceed in an efficient manner. And I particularly want to praise everybody in the county manager's office, the DA's office, the clerk's office, the community development staff, and the SOSU TV staff. I very much appreciate the members of our community who participated by watching and by providing us with their comments. And lastly, I hope we all continue to give thanks to everyone in our county, in the state, in our country, and across the world who are on the front lines and fighting the problems that we're currently facing. So with those closing comments, I'll let any of the other planning commissioners voice their thoughts at this point. I think we have about another two minutes or so until we close public comments. Are there other, other planning commissioners that wish to speak at this point?
I'd like to thank staff. I think they've done one job, and I appreciate that they took the time to have actually a trial run to see if everybody get connected. Thank you, guys. You've gone above and beyond.
Thank you, Mark. Colleen, are you getting other calls or is the line silent at this point?
It's silent right now.
But we'll, we'll pause for another minute or so, and then we will be able to conclude the meeting by giving everybody full opportunity to provide their closing public comments.
Kirk, may I ask a question?
Yes, Maureen, go ahead.
Sam Taylor, are you willing to sit down with Jacque and Mark and me to start working on the initiative language or to approve what we come up with? Give us some guidance on that.
I would need to talk to Doug and see what the scope is or level of involvement that he would want our office to have in this regard before I could commit, you know, my services or the services of our office. So I would want to run that by him first, if that's okay.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition at this point?
I have another, another call, Kirk.
Okay, Colleen, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
All right.
Hi, Colleen. This is Ellie Waller. It was my comment that didn't get recorded. Here it is again. No disrespect to the Conways or any developers, but any rezoning anywhere in the county boundaries before community plan updates are completed makes no sense if the community doesn't get to weigh in on the bigger picture. This is piecemeal planning and unacceptable. This is one of the bigger objections made with the master plan update. We were told no rezonings would occur, and our greatest fear is that more changes approved lend to the very comment that the applicant said is becoming an urban area. These characteristics will be similar as to what exists today if we keep doing these rezonings. What about the rural Indian Hills existing community plan that now governs the area? Indian Hills Jack's Valley totals 5,056 acres. In 2010, our population was 5,406. Looking forward to the new 2020 census stats. As it's increased since then, and with Valley Knolls and Big George alone not built yet, key issues will happen. This is a rural character now. This isn't about one acre lots. It's about cumulative development in this local vicinity. Cumulative traffic, a real issue today. Wait and see how much worse it's going to get in as little as five years. By the way, 298 approved homes for Big George is only a small portion of the approximate 100 and, excuse me, 1,300 proposed for the entire Riverwood Big Wer- Big George development in the North Tahoe-Supercicic Plan. At Valley Knolls, plus there's 16 one-acre lots approved called Freedom Ranch in the Jack's Valley area, not sold yet. Agree, one-acre lots are better, but a community plan update process is more appropriate first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other calls or recordings, Colleen?
That's it so far.
Okay. By my clock, I have 3:29 PM, and we did start the public comment at 3:21, so I think we've had a full five minutes. So I'll now close public comment, and we'll adjourn the meeting at 3:29 PM. Thank you all.